Okay, good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting. Today is Thursday, May 8th, 2025. The meeting is called to order at six, no, 5:36. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
President.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
We will now have some announcements from our assistant city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
First item, please.
Public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items on this agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. The city council received a written comment from Chancity Jenny Nunez in support of reappointing incumbents and appointment of two of new applicants to the commission.
Next item, please.
Interviews and appointments, Community Services Commission. Applicants will be considered to fill three expiring seats and one vacancy on the Community Services Commission. At the conclusion of the interviews, you will be asked to consider appointing four applicants to the commission. Following the selection of the four applicants, another vote will be conducted to select one of the four to serve a one-year term. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, you will each have three minutes to interview the candidates. The timer will be set. When the orange light lights up, it will indicate when the applicant has one minute remaining. At the conclusion of the interviews, the council will vote by ballot to appoint the applicants to the seats that are available.
Okay, and if, council, if you look at the packet that was given to you, you have one, it's entitled Schedule for the Commissioner Interviews. Those are for your notes. The second one is actually the ballot that has the little square box. And then the third are just some suggested questions, if you want to use those. So are there any questions? Okay, let's proceed. So Nancy.
I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me?
Great, great. Yes, we can hear you. First of all, thank you for your willingness to help with our community, serve our community on the commission. I know you've served, you've been serving, so you are an incumbent. So my question to you is, why do you want to return to this?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's a great question. And let me just start off by saying thank you for allowing me to appear remotely. I know it took a team effort to get this going tonight, so I really appreciate that. So I, I've had a really great experience serving on the Community Services Commission for the past two years. I mean, we were just coming out of the pandemic, so I feel like the past two years was sort of a return to the, to normal. And it's been great to see the community come together at various events, seeing the events improve along the way over the past two years, and seeing us add new events as well to engage the community. I, I think it's, you know, we're making a lot of, you know, good progress in terms of inclusiveness, especially with the new digital tools that we have, with Civic Rec, using new media tools as well, and, and even starting new flyering process that, you know, we've sort of asked our teen ambassadors to also serve as ambassadors for our programs within the community. So I, I've really had a great experience working with this Community Services Department, as well as my fellow commissioners. It's been wonderful to see, you know, fellow residents on a regular basis, even if it's just once a month. And I would love to continue to, to serve my community in this capacity.
Thank you so much, Nancy. I'm now going to pass it on to Vice Mayor Chan.
Nancy, thank you for applying and thanks for being here. Okay, so my question is, how much do you like pickleball?
I play tennis in high school, so.
No, I'm kidding.
He's joking.
You can answer anyway.
The timer's ticking.
Oh, the timer's ticking. Sorry, I gotta stop messing around. What is your vision for the future of the Community Services Commission? Do you like the current events as they are so far? Or do you have ideas for new or different events and services that you think would better serve our, our city's residents? And maybe even people coming from outside?
Sure, sure. Obviously, you know, a lot of our programming is targeted for City of San Gabriel residents because they are the taxpayers and the voters in our city. You know, absolutely open to engaging our, you know, our neighbors and having the whole community come out to our events, which would also help with programming numbers as well. You know, we, we do a lot with the budget that we have. And, you know, that's all the individual events, as well as all the regular programming that happens during the summer. My family absolutely takes advantage of the summer camp, the pentathlon, the after-school programs, as well as all the single-day events such as the Lunar New Year Festival. So it's, it's a really full slate. I think one area that, you know, maybe we should work a little bit more on is, you know, how do we engage South San Gabriel? Not South San Gabriel City, but, you know, sort of the areas that are just south of Valley Boulevard up until South San Gabriel City with the rest of San Gabriel. And so, you know, sort of having more ideas of how to make sure that we're proactively reaching out to that part of the community as well. It will be important going forward. Obviously, there are constraints in terms of the park resources that we have, in particular parking at that local park. And sort of, you know, putting youth soccer or some other community event there is a little bit more challenging. But I feel like there are, you know, more ways of making sure that we, we're open access, no matter where you live in San Gabriel. I think that using more, sort of more digital technologies is the way forward. And so, you know, in terms of events, it would be, you know, how do we, you know, perhaps we can survey the community and see if they're on Reddit. You know, can we do more Reddit ads? This is something that we should be pursuing. Should we be looking at more AI-targeted digital campaigns? Because now, you know, a lot of people are Googling things and, you know, marketing, marketing for Google is changing a lot because, you know, when you, when you type up something, now AI will automatically answer the question for you. So how do we make our programs and services targeted for people who are using AI to find out about events for the City of San Gabriel? I think that's going to be important. And lastly, I think that, you know, if we can, we try to do a lot in terms of engaging the citizens in various languages, but if we could do more in terms of putting out material in Spanish and Chinese and Vietnamese, you know, obviously, there are constraints to doing that because, again, there's, it's a lot of work involved with translations. Perhaps we can use, you know, if there are accurate digital tools to be able to do that.
I'm sorry, Nancy, I'm going to have to interrupt you. It's only three minutes for.
Okay, sorry about that. We don't see.
Yeah, you couldn't hear it. The bell went off. Yeah, so, but, but we have another council member. We have three more council members who would like to ask you some questions, so.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Nancy, thank you to continue to serve our, the community service. I know, so you are currently a chairperson, right? Okay, so based on your two-year term, so how many, like, our community event, you have a chance to attend it? And what's your, what do you, the recommendation? And another question, it's, you feel it's enough, the event for the community service? Or you, you, you have ideas to bring them, the, another, you feel it's important?
Yeah, yeah. I, I have gone to many events offered by the City of San Gabriel, as well as other events offered by cities in San Gabriel Valley. You know, my, my kids are actively attending the summer programming, for instance, and also the after-school programming. The last six months, I've had a newborn with me, so I may not have gone to, you know, as many one-off events as I've done in the past, but, you know, we've still been out to Lunar New Year Festival. You know, I unfortunately was unable to attend the Halloween, the Halloween event, which is one of my favorites because I think the Haunted House is so special. But we did make it out to July 4th, and I'm looking forward to July 4th this year as well. I know that we've expanded the budget to, from, in, which allows for a fireworks show or a drone show that's more than eight minutes long, which includes more lasers and things like that. I think that's definitely, you know, I like the event a lot. I know the community really enjoyed the event, and I want to see more programming around that. I think adding, you know, music to, so that it times and lines up with the fire, the drone show is, it's absolutely the right call. I think that's really fun. And, you know, in, in terms of new ideas, again, the slate is very full. I, you know, there's always new, new things that we could add, but I want to be mindful of the budget, too. And if we had the budget for it, obviously, a Moon Festival would be wonderful without hopefully not duplicating with the other cities. We'll deal like Temple City and, and other cities around us. But, you know, it'd be wonderful to be at, you know, if we keep on thinking ahead and making sure that we're capturing other holidays that are very special and important for the community.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Okay, Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Commissioner Nancy Dong, thank you so much for your time and your commitment to the city. Personally, I've seen you working hard alongside when my wife used to serve in the commission. And both of you guys were pregnant at the same time, and my baby is only a few months older than, than yours. And I got a chance to meet your little one. It's adorable. The thing I like about him is that we share the same birthday, too. So hey, what a good, what a, what an interesting surprise. Okay, my question is that it's, I know it's a hard role, serving as a commissioner. There's a lot of challenges as well. The Community Service Commission exists to serve the people, not special interests or personal agendas. So how do you ensure that your actions and decisions as a commissioner reflect honesty, integrity, and genuine commitment to the community's best interests, especially when there's?
Right, right. And that's absolutely so important for us to uphold the ethics of the city. So we don't often get many people coming to our commission meetings. I remember, this is, this is post-pickleball debate, so that's when my, my term began. There was one person that came who talked about the need for more teen programming. And after that comment card was submitted, we actually addressed that directly in our work plan to look at programming that hits all demographics within the City of San Gabriel. So we're absolutely listening. I would encourage more people to come to our events because it's, you know, the City of San Gabriel is so diverse, and we want to be inclusive and engaging in, in all aspects. And so, you know, the, the more community members that can make it out at 6:30 onwards would be appreciated. I think it's important that we, you know, when we, when we have these discussions, we're basing our discussions on facts. The, the department does such a great job of making us look smart because they come prepared, they're able to answer our questions. And so as long as we have the facts in front of us, then we can make good decisions on the behalf of the community that's, that's not based on our own personal beliefs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wu.
Hi, Nancy. Well, thank you very much for your service again. And my quick question is, you just mentioned about if we are able to add more event, the Moon, the Mid-Autumn Festival would be a good one. So what is your perspective about AAPI months, for example, in May, that I don't know if you have an opportunity to participate? One of the event that happened just about a week ago in our Mission Playhouse. But I wonder, what is your, do you have any plan about making some kind of event that will become, it's more like a city-adopted event that will be making our city, will become more influence to our entire community?
Sure. Are you referring to sort of an event that's just targeted to the AAPI community or an event in general?
Well, actually, actually, the AAPI community that we had in Thanks USA, which is organized by our, my colleagues, Councilmember Ding, that Thanks USA event, that has been eleven years.
Okay. In terms of organizing a separate event, there, you know, I don't necessarily see this as directly a Community Services Department event, but something that I love to see is, you know, sort of more people biking and safely biking, not just using an e-bike on a, on, you know, on, on a sidewalk. You know, making sure that we have the rules around that. But perhaps there could be a joint Parks and Rec, Community Services Department event that celebrates alternative forms of transportation. Because I certainly, you know, I'm, I'm just off of Delmar Boulevard, and everyone's racing to the 10 freeway or racing from the 10 freeway to get to work. And so to be able to see more, you know, sort of that, that avenue becoming more bike-friendly would be wonderful. And I, and I think, you know, sort of people taking bikes to the park and enjoying the part-time with their families would be something that I, I would love to see. We do have lots of events at Victor Lugo. We have Play Day coming up. You know, maybe there's something that we could do to add on to that event so that we can talk about e-bikes and how to make San Gabriel Valley a lot more healthy for, you know, a lot healthier communities by using these, you know, more environmentally friendly vehicles.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Nancy, well, that concludes our interview. Thank you so much for those thoughtful, thoughtful feedback that you've given us all. And staff will get back to you to let you know the results of the vote.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Good night.
Our next interview is with Jackie Lau.
Okay. Hello there.
Hello. First of, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve on this commission in particular. I, I haven't met you before, so I'm just going to say Mr. Lau. Mr. Lau, I will begin with the questions, and then each council member has three minutes to go back and forth with you. You don't have to use the whole time. There is a timer there, just so you know. So, so my, my question to you is, you know, we have several commissions that you could have selected. Those were done previously, but it appears that you really honed in onto this commission, the Community Services Commission. So my question is, why serve on this particular commission? What kind of led you to this commission?
Yeah, I, I went through the list, and I was looking at each of the categories, and they sound really intense outside my expertise and something that I haven't done before. So I wasn't able to draw any experience to add to those other committees. However, for this one, having worked at a school and currently working with older adults, I am being, living in San Gabriel for over 30 years now, I feel like I could really contribute and add to kind of the charm of San Gabriel.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chan.
Yes, Mr. Lau, thank you for coming. Thank you. Thanks for coming. My basic question is, how much do you like pickleball?
I.
No, no, I was kidding. I just think I'm funny. See, I know. It's the first time for you, but, 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 but they're going to hear it seven times. But seriously, if you get on this commission, what is your vision for the future of the Community Services Commission? For example, do you like the, the current events that the city puts on as they are at the moment? Or do you have ideas for new or different kinds of events or services that you think would better, better serve our San Gabriel residents and community?
Yeah, so I enjoy quite a bit of the events put on by the city. One of the events that my family and I go to annually is the, the summer concerts at Vincent Lugo Park specifically because we're a good five, 10 minutes walk away from there. And every summer, my mom would ask like, hey, when is the next one we're going to go? Because we like to drag our little carts with our dinner and go there. And one of the, I guess, things she's noticed is, why isn't there any Mandarin or Cantonese? Just Chinese bands that are playing. It's usually like a Spanish band or like a Odies band. And she was like, I would love to have something that's like my native language, and I bet the turnout would be great, too. And so that actually kind of sparked how I want to kind of take part in the committee is that I realized that there is an Asian population that is not always heard or seen, especially the older adults, which is kind of, you know, a population I enjoy working with. And so I would love to be able to kind of hear what their interests and passions are, and then add more to the events being available. And so, yeah, I mean, a lot of things being put on by the city, I love. Kind of like the, I forgot what it's called. It used to be with the Sasquatch, where they had the whole city cleared out with the.
That's Activist TV, yeah.
Yes, because I'm a huge fan of Siklavia. And so, I mean, I'm looking forward to things like that. I'm like, yes, this is exciting. I'm ready. But I also see that there's a need for people like my parents and older adults that would benefit from these events for they have more of that social connection and the sense of belonging.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you.
Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie, thank you to apply. And I hear you're living in San Gabriel 30 years, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, what's the, right now, before, did you think about it? You want to serve the community? Or why, right now, you want to serve the, the, the community service?
So funny you ask that. When I was in high school, I actually took part in the, oh my gosh, what is it called? Where I was a student, I got to, like, take part in being here and.
Youth in government.
Yes, thank you. Denise, you are.
That's why I'm mayor.
So that was actually how I started. I'm like, this would be super neat to try. And so that was actually my first interest in taking part. But then I pursued school. I, I lived in Japan for two years. My wife is in San Diego and her family, so I worked there for a few years. And it's not until recently that I came back to San Gabriel. And it's really why that I started pursuing it now is because now that I'm actually being here, almost, I would say permanently. I still go back to San Diego because my wife's family's there. I really want to kind of play a bigger role because I find that a lot of people, they move out of wherever they were born and raised, but very few actually go back to where they were from to help the other people that are there. And I, I think it's important to be able to go back to where you were born and raised and, and, you know, kind of build up from there.
Thank you for coming back. And so recently, like you'd say, you couple of years. So the rest of the program, so most, which one event you attended, you like it? And, yeah, just go ahead and answer first.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's quite a few events. So like, I, oh, one, one that actually I really enjoyed was that when there used to be the whole, during COVID, we have the, the parking lot at the, oh my gosh, Denise, help me out there.
Are you talking about the drive-through concerts?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, once again, I took my parents there. And I remember, Denise, this is also you. It was like.
I was mayor at the time, so, yeah.
So during that time, there was a group of these all-female musicians playing. And I remember, it's like, the name is like Butterflies or something like that.
We, we had Las Colibres, but there were, oh, okay.
Hummingbirds, right? Colibres, hummingbirds? Butterflies? I don't know. Anyway, so, I mean, having events like that where there's like a whole drive-through, really, and I brought my relatives along, too. So we had a few, and it was like really fun to just have those types of events where normally they, it's not something that they know about or interested in. But having that experience, I think it's, it's nice to have that cross-coach.
Okay, actually, I have another question.
No, no, you're done. Wait, no, no, no. It's three minutes only.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So I, it's three minutes.
The bell rang.
Okay.
Yes, so, thank you, both of you. Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Well, it sounds like Madam Mayor is the Jackie Whisperer.
Okay, reset, reset my three minutes. Okay, my, well, first of all, Jackie Lau, I want to say thank you for stepping up. You know, just to do what you're doing right now in the interview, and you can see, it's, it's a process, right? And I just want to commend you for stepping up to the plate and taking on, possibly taking on an opportunity to serve our city in a different capacity. So I kind of want to dive deeper into the, I'd, I'd heard that you have like a lot of experience with the seniors and all that. I kind of want to dive deep, and then your experience traveling to Japan and down, I think you said San Diego, right? Some of the events that you see elsewhere that you can bring here, I mean, of course, we have a budget and we have certain restraints. What, what do you think that we can benefit from? Do you see any holes that we can fill from your experience?
That's actually a really good question. I mean, I think the difficulty is trying to figure out what our committee, community, community needs or wants, as well as what resources do we have to work with? And so without knowing those details, it makes it really hard to kind of, because I could suggest like, oh, we can have like concerts and festivals, but really, what is the parameters that we have? And so I think about, like, I see Alhambra having farmer's market, right? And, you know, I'm curious to know, can we have farmer's market where it, like, is within our, our community? And I also see something like over at Roseme that they have a community garden. And I'm curious to know, the closest one besides the Roseme one that I know is over at Alhambra off of that Mission.
Granada. It's on Granada. I'm from Alhambra. I'm, I'm your lifeline tonight.
So, I mean, just things like that where I, I see it, but do we have space? Is it possible? So there's a lot of questions that I don't necessarily have to answer to, but, yeah, as, but that's part of the, the committee, right? I don't always have the answers, but I'm able to bounce ideas, and that's how we can build.
And for, just for clarity, for you, so you know, we did, they, they tried to bring back farmer's market. You know, I know that we're, it's coming back, I hope, soon, and with some tweaks. You know, it's always trial and error. But I'm sure we'll get it right. But we need people like in the commission to help with that, those processes. And I think we also had something like Comic-Con on, on Fairview over down there. And it was for a while now on that, on the Village area.
It's Village. It's Fairview, but that was long ago, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, hit or miss, right? But you're right. We have to see the scope of what we're working with. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lau. And thank you so much for applying for this position. I, I heard that it's very impressive that you have a background and educational, especially you travel abroad. So my question is that, besides the summertime, besides the farmer's market, what other projects in the city that will be making you very excited and very interested in?
I, so when I was working at elementary school as a school counselor, one of my quarterly events that I put on was a career fair. And so the students have all these people come in. They get to kind of see what's going on and what people work on and kind of inspire them at an elementary level to see the opportunities available that they may not see. I think it would be nice to have more of a partnership, starting at a very elementary-level age, where they're able to maybe even see the youth in government, see how things are run. Because I didn't know about how government really worked until high school. But by then, I mean, I could have really built my way up to that. And so I, I mean, I'm a huge proponent of learning about careers and options at a very young age. And so I think that would be something I would be interested in taking part in. Yeah, I, I think that's something that I think often about. Like, how can I have more of my students be connected with their community where they're growing up?
Well, thank you. And since you have lived in Japan for two years, do you happen to know or you have friends in our city that is Japanese?
So when I think back to when I was growing up, where I went to school in elementary school at McKinley and then Jefferson and Gabalino, I have friends that are Japanese. However, I haven't kept in touch with them. I don't even know if they're still in San Gabriel. Uh, I have friends that are Japanese, however, I haven't kept in touch with them. I don't even know if they're still in San Gabriel. Um, so, yeah.
I see. The reason I ask because um on San Gabriel Boulevard and just a bit north of Los Tinas, there is like a. A place is called Kotomo no Uchi, which is the the kid's house. So that's why I think that uh if you're thinking about like younger age, education and things. That that will be a a very good resource that we have just call our city as a diverse city.
That's one right next to the um.
Church.
Yeah.
Yes.
I've seen it on the map, but I've never, when I bike past it, I can't really find it.
Because as of today, that the sign for the kid's house is still there, so it shows it is in Japanese.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so just for your reference, but thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Lau, well, that concludes our interview for today. Thank you so much for um so much thoughtful um feedback, but also your honesty. I do appreciate that. Um, staff will get back to you after um we vote tonight and um again, um, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Denise, for helping me out.
Our next interview is with Davis Barantes.
Hello, everyone. Hello.
You're on? Okay, great. Well, um, thank you so much, Davis, for for being here. For your willingness to serve um our community. I know you are returning. Um, you served two years, I believe, and so um I my question is. Uh, and let me just explain. So each council member will have a total of three minutes between your answers and their questions. Um, there is um a timer there, so you'll hear it ring and once it rings, then we proceed to the next council member, just so you know. So everyone gets a chance. Okay. Uh, my question is, um. Of all the commissions, you decided that you wanted to return to this particular commission. What 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 brings you back to this commission? Why do you like this commission so much?
When I first interviewed, I had mentioned that um my son, my oldest son is uh on the spectrum.
Sorry, is is your mic not working? It is? Oh.
I don't hear it. I'll talk louder. Okay, so when I first uh joined, I I my my oldest son, he's on the spectrum, so. I wanted to incorporate more activities for those that are on spectrum or maybe that is building because they're. Um, so. Hello, hello? Um, so wanting to.
Thank you.
All right, my question, first question for you is, how much do you love pickleball? No, I'm kidding. I'm. I'm gonna subject my my colleagues to this all night. All right, yeah, they're already sick of it. Um, no, my my question for you is, uh, what is your vision for the future of Community Services Commission? Uh, do you like the current events we have eh as they are? Or do you have certain ideas for new or different events and services that uh you think would better serve our San Gabriel residents? And even people outside our city to to come into our community to enjoy and and learn about us and learn to love San Gabriel more?
No, the current events are great.
Great, no, tha- thank you. I appreciate that. I yield.
Uh, Councilmember Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, David. Come back to continue service our community service. Yeah, I I I have an opportunity to see you on the a lot of the the community service, the event. So uh, just one of simple question, it's which one you you read it most like it? And if you want to continue to, so which one you want to bring the more event to our city for the community service? Yeah.
Um, part of the the holidays, the Christmas one, the biggest one, uh, draws lots. And I definitely would like to uh expand on that, like I said, engage all the youth. Trying to get them to go. Uh, we had the youth ambassadors. Commission and uh, yeah, they brought up that they would like to also see something for their age range. It's kind of difficult, you know, like I said, train riders for little kids and whatnot, so we definitely like to improve on that um more.
Uh, second part, it's it's which one, the the event you currently, maybe we don't have it. For example, some like AAPI or some event you want to like a mom festival, something like that. Okay, did you, yeah, yeah, new event, yeah.
Well, that goes back to uh.
Okay. Okay.
You know, bring awareness as well, um, because. Uh, my son, he kind of had an incident at school with bullying, so um, you know. I want to engage everyone to make them aware that, you know, everyone is different and, you know. You can't expect everyone to be the same. I just want to have an open dialogue at an event, just make awareness for city.
Thank you, thank you. Your 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 bringing your idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Barantes, first of all, thank you for your service and choosing to, well, two thank yous for your service. First and foremost, most importantly, thank you for serving our country. I know you're you're a veteran, so thank you for that. It brings a unique, uh, I think it brings a unique dynamic to that commission to see things. Uh, not only and and with all the other things that you bring us seeing with apparent of somebody with the spectrum. But also being somebody that served in our country. And again, thank you for serving as a commissioner. I know you you can see now that it takes a lot of time, right? Even if it's just once a month. And and it's a lot of good conversation, you know, and especially when you have more people involved, there's a lot of dialogue. So my question is going to revolve around teen, you mentioned it and I'm and now I'm very intrigued. And teen involvement, I know that you've seen um our youth involvement. I know that you've have the unique opportunity to working. Uh, working with the ambassadors. How's that experience been? And and I want to just dive deeper into what can we do moving forward to to build on that if we could.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Wu.
Hi, yes, Davis. So good to see you here. Um, and thank you so much for your dedication to our community. Uh, just a quick questions, I I do notice that you have mentioned emphasizing about your son, so I truly. You know, admire that because this is so family oriented. Um, have you, do you have any knowledge about the baseball league? That's uh junior leagues, you know, little leagues and because the reason I bring that up because. Uh, that uh so far, we do not have our own league and we have all the students now joined the league in Temple City. So what is your perspective? If you know something about, can you share that with us?
Sports, sports, and the only one that I know for sure is that they have one for those on the spectrum is uh. AYSO VIP. I had signed my son up to that when he was younger, so they pretty much have buddies with him. You know, they'll play with that pretty much and show him how to, you know, run and take and pass the ball. Um, I have not seen anything for baseball. So I would love to get my son into or at least, you know, have kind of that VIP for maybe soccer, baseball, basketball, just so he can, you know, try all the sports. And have someone there to kind of, someone dedicated to him and help play and learn and understand the game. Because if I were to sign up for baseball, it's a big goal to make things to know. So unfortunately, I do not know about baseball. Um, I am trying to talk to my coordinator at Regional Center. Because they have all the vendors and I want to see if there is something. Maybe like play with it or interaction or, you know, something to build on. But yeah, for baseball, I have not seen anything for that. I did soccer, but yeah.
No worry. So, um, well, and thank you so much for your service to our nations and how, since we now have our own cities. Uh, ceremonies for Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and even July uh Fourth. So how, as a as a veterans, how you feel about these events? Is there anything that we can improve because we do care our veterans?
For the veterans. I don't know how you guys identify the veterans. I know I had spoken to one and this was last year. They were not aware of the one of the ceremony, just slipped in my mind right now.
Thanks, thanks, USC. You you got invited, I think, maybe there. Okay, that's the last year, yeah.
But I don't know if the city has like an internal list of veterans. Um, I know I saw online for the uh Legion. There's one in San Gabriel, but on their website, so I don't, I emailed them to contact them and say, hey, what's what's going on? Cause there's other um Legions like in Alhambra, Big, Pasadena, they host events, like they have their own hall. I would love to see one in San Gabriel. Um, but I don't know if that's one.
Don't you finish?
Yeah, I don't know if it shut down or if it was getting traction, but they're on the Legion website, has content. I emailed them, just never heard anything back. But I would definitely love to have like a veteran, like here in San Gabriel, uh, what even off the beach and, you know, stuff. I know we have the uh one memorial.
The coalition, yeah.
Um, but I think that's just their focus is on great and I'm more.
Memorial, monument.
So I would definitely like some of that more um.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, David. Well, that, I'm Davis, I'm sorry. Uh, that concludes the interview. Um, I want to just thank you for for your feedback. Um, and for sharing, you know, your your insight because you you have served for two years and again, we'll see you at the memorial ceremony, hopefully. And veterans and any other um events where we honor our um military, our veterans. Um, and um, anyway, so um, staff will uh get back to you. Uh, we will be voting um at the end of the interviews and um again, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay, we're gonna pause for a moment to um fix the mics.
Should we let her sit? Should we let her sit?
So we're gonna officially take a health break. Be back in five minutes, six thirty.
Testing, 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 one, two. Testing, testing, testing. Testing, 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 one, two. Test, test. Testing, testing. A little louder, maybe. Okay, you hear me clear. If you can hear me clear, that's should suffice. Three, two, one. Testing, testing, testing. One, two, one, two. You guys, you guys think everything is that loud and clear? If they need to grab the mic out, they can always. Testing, testing.
All right, cool.
Testing, testing, testing.
No, I think we're good. The mic sounds great.
She's back in the room, just so, same thing. Sorry.
Cool.
Okay, hello, Ms. Wang. I'm welcome. I wanted to explain real briefly, each of the council members have three minutes. We have the timer and the three minutes is between you and the council member, the questions, and then the answers. After three minutes, that will ring and then I'm just gonna move to the next person. So, I'm gonna start. Okay, great. So, first of all, I wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve on our community. Now, I've been doing commission interviews, probably 20 years, first on school board and now on city council. And I have to say, this is the first time I've seen a duplicate application. So, you had one under Quan Quan, Q, Q, Q U N?
That's right.
And then Wendy, Wendy, same last name. And then the assistant city clerk had to bring it to your attention. And so, I'm just kind of curious how that happened? Why was there two applications submitted?
My legalized name is always Q, Quan, well, Quan Quan, pronounce it. And I don't know what's happened with the system. I think maybe I just submitted twice, so that might happen.
Okay, but when she brought it to your attention, you didn't seem to be phased.
Well, I tried to contact Marilyn and I told her about the duplicate application and she said she will inform the council members and she said it's taken, it's finished.
Okay, so, so you knew that you had submitted two of them?
Didn't know until Marilyn told me.
Oh, okay, so, so you didn't contact her?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm getting them mixed up. Okay, um, let's see, I still have a few, a few more minutes. Of all the commissions, you had chosen this commission. Why Community Services?
Well, I lived in San Gabriel for over 20 years. I grew up in this community and I join a lot of volunteers here when I was in school and also when I grew up. And a lot of activities in different cities too. I organize events, like the last time, March, the one in library and a council member went there too. And I just want to do a lot like community welfares and to contribute my experience and I also want to learn from the cities and to help our neighbors. And also, we have a diversity of cultures here and we're also friendly, business friendly. So, I'm, that's, that's why I choose community service that I've been doing for the past, maybe like five or six years.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Chan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wendy, thank you for coming out today. Let me ask you my question. Do you like pickleball? Yes or no?
Yeah, but I love basketball and shot put because I was in Jefferson Middle School and Gabriel High for basketball team for eight years and also shot put for half years.
Shot put?
Shot put, yeah. We do have, Gabriel High, we do have shot put. But I didn't finish it.
You're gonna have to show me that.
Yeah, kind of.
Thanks.
It's hard.
That's, that's, that's a tough sport. It's no messing around. Yeah, it's me being funny. Well, one more serious question. What is your vision for the future of Community Services Commission? Do you like the, all the events we have so far as they are? Or do you have ideas for new or different kinds of events or services that you think would better serve our community or even attract other people from other cities to come, want to be in our city more?
Yes, so the answer for that, the vision, and also there's challenges too. I'm suggesting that I've been participate a lot of events here in local in San Gabriel, also our neighborhood cities, you know, like Timber City, Arcadia and so on. And what I'm having to, wanted to bring to the city, it's that motor culture because not a lot of our neighborhood, like me or my family that live here before, there's language barriers, a lot, even though till nowadays. And I'm Chinese, but I have friends that Vietnamese, that Filipinos here. And sometime, a lot of events that I participate in San Gabriel might be missing the information to our citizens here. And a lot, a lot of people don't know about it. And being a host, I was a host in two TV station and also Chinese in L.A. for online. It's like a, you could call me, well, you don't have to call me internet influencers, but yeah, it's like I could bring medias and also people from different cities, cultures and businesses to here to our local cities and to form different events. For example, like Asian or Chinese Lunar Years or I was in the Chi-Pao Culture Show and I'm also the ambassador for that organization too. So, hold on, that thought, I, I've been, I did organize Chi-Pao Shows in San Gabriel with other hosts, host, yeah. So, I like to do this kind of stuff and it's, because I was marketing when I, when our company was in San Gabriel back then in Hilton. So, yeah, that's what I do.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Wendy, to apply the community service. And yeah, I, several like event I saw you attended. So, based on your experience, what's the, the, the most that you like the event, you know, current city, the community service event? And the, if you, if you coming to the commissioner, then what the, the, the most event you want to bring in? You, you like it, yeah?
So, I think the thing I'm gonna, you mean the thing I'm gonna bring into the San Gabriel cities, right, like the events? We, I host a lot of events and what I'm, I'm trying to get experience, what I, from every events that I've been doing because I still, I feel like I'm not expert at it. So, I wanted to learn from all the councils and also the colleagues here in city halls and actually to understand more about our local governments and our, you know, rules, standards. So, being an M.C. host or internet interferes or it could be benefits to other citizens in United States. We could go to internationally. I mean, San Gabriel, it is a city internationally, no, right? But nowadays, social media are really important. We are not only align on a newspaper or, you know, radios and, but also different broadcasts too. So, I want to bring more into like a, a social media platform more like that. So, we're, we are well-known.
Okay.
And also positive actions, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Herera Avila.
Actually, let me please ask you to speak closer into the mic. I think that.
Like this, right?
Yeah, that's louder.
Oh, okay, I can hear myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Wendy Wang. Appreciate you coming here and taking time to put in for, for this role. As you know, it's a, it's a huge time commitment where you have to come at least once a month and you'll be working with, if selected, you will be working with other people. Sometimes you don't share the same ideas. So, the, my question is gonna be this. The Community Service Commission exists to serve the people and not special interests or personal agendas. How do you ensure that your actions and decisions as a commissioner reflect honesty or honesty, integrity and a genuine commitment to the community's best interest, especially when there's disagreements within, even within the, the same body that you'll be working with?
Well, being as a, a marketing involvement, I've done like 10 years, different areas. I like to mine community skills. I think it's to be stabilized, like, like to understand what other people thinks, to actually talk to them through. If not, we have different ways of, because we have different growing backgrounds and cultures. So, it's, it's okay. I think, I think it's great that we have different opinions and what that become is what we do better for the cities and we have more answer. So, that's why our San Gabriel is the most bad city ever been, yeah.
From, okay, thank you. From your experience, you know, you said 20 years of being here in San Gabriel.
Living here, 20, I'm only 27 now.
Yeah, so, thank you. What event, if there's a particular event that stands out from the past or from now, which is that event that you think is really good or that we need to bring back? Or we could consider bringing back?
I think the reason one is the one in San Gabriel Library and the librarian and also council member helped a lot. And we did, because of the fire, what's going on in the past and I did a community welfare events in library and what I bring is youth committee and also the elders also. I did donations and to the police department in San Gabriel and also different facilities in L.A. So, does that answer your, well, that's to.
My question is more like what event you think that we have already? Not the ones that you've done, but what we have or what we had in the past?
I think it's a Chinese culture with Hispanic or other device, diversities, culture even will be better because most likely, right now, we have like events that is only hosted by Chinese, hosted by Hispanic, hosted by Vietnamese, you know? But I think it's, it would be better that we have like Hispanic, Filipinos, Vietnamese, Chinese, all combined, Koreans combined together and for food potty or for, you know, nice street flea markets or something to understand our community that we are a, we are open, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ms. Wang.
Hi.
Thank you so much for your application. Well, your resume is so impressive that you have the working, long working experience and you said you have 10 years of experience in legal field.
That's, I work as a marketing. I was starting as a front desk to lawyer assistants and to move up to marketing directors.
So, you said you're like specialized in the legal field, right?
I said I'm specialized in immigration.
Immigration law?
Yeah.
I see. And you're in the process of getting your bar?
No, a paralegal license.
Paralegal license?
Yes.
I see. Okay, and there, there is another one. It's called City of Monterey Park, California Environmental Ambassador. Do you mind if you can explain a little bit more about this?
Yes, that's the event that I host once I was M.C. for Chinese in L.A. That was, that's at the beach. I just forgot what beach is it. And then the Dwardi of City Council, Dwardi Samuel Khan, he, he was there too. He did the, and also the Peter Chan from Monterey Park City Council, they, they announced it, the, the name for ambassador for the events that I held up a group of youth committee, youth and, and we clean out, cleaning the, the sea shores and also the parks and everything like that, yeah. And it's really fun. And we work with the local school, school too, yeah.
So, that is how it calls Environmental Ambassador by the City of Monterey Park?
That's what the certificate says.
Certificate, right?
Yeah, certificate, yeah.
No problem. And with all your experience that, and you have been living in our city almost 20 years. So, in the past two decades, that what you think that will be a, a good event or what you're, you can contribute to this commission?
I think right now, we're going on to World Cup and also 2028 Olympic and stuff like that, right? So, we're dealing with an international perspective and different, people from different countries are coming over. And if we're still doing, well, I'm not saying it's not good. I, I totally agree with it and I love to. But I think it's better for Asian Americans, Koreans, you know, different Hispanic or we could held a culturalized event, not just.
Can you make an example?
For example, the one I've been to is in Nashville, Tennessee. They, they.
Nashville tennis?
Nashville, Tennessee, yeah.
Oh, Tennessee, okay.
And then they have like, because they have the second largest Staples Center over there and I was there for like half year or so. And I went to one of the events. Everybody have their potluck and their food or their dresses, I mean, you know, fashion or something, modernize, you know? Culture, history is really important, but how we reflect from history to right now to modernize, how to present? I mean, I love Blossom Market. It's the best project and I loved going there. And I think for times up, for, for we could do more than I think it's great, yeah.
No worry. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being so mindful. So, that concludes our interview. I want to thank you for, for your feedback and for the time and your patience since we did start a little later. And the staff will contact you. We will be voting at the end of the interviews. And, you know, again, thank you for your willingness to spend the time with us this evening.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your contribution to our cities.
Our next interview is with Aissa Kano.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much, first of all, for your willingness to serve the community. The way we have it structured is you have three minutes with each council member between the questions and the responses. We do have a timer, so when the time is up, it will go off and then we'll move to the next council member. So, everyone will have equal time. You don't have to use the full three ti, three minutes, so don't worry about that. It could be less than that. I would like to start by asking you, of all the commissions that we have, you selected this one, although we did do the interviews earlier for the other ones. But I just wanted to hear from you, why this commission? What, what lures you into this commission?
I think there really wasn't any other commission that interested me because this, the community services is, is my life. It's what I know. It's my profession. It's what I know how to do. It's what I do well. And I, I come with a lot of experience working in different communities, multicultural communities. And when I saw the description of it, I knew that was the best place for me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chan.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you.
And my question for you is, do you like pickleball or do you love pickleball?
Well, I love pickleball now because I just made a friend. And she is gonna be my coach. And she is gonna be my coach.
I'm gonna hit her next.
So I got her card, and, yes, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna love pickleball.
But, no, more seriously, what is your vision for the future of the Community Services Commission? Do you like the current events that the city holds so far, as they are?
I do.
Or do you have ideas for new or different events or services that you think would better serve our residents, and maybe draw in other people to come enjoy our city?
Well, I'm, I'm fairly new to San Gabriel, and I have participated or attended several of the community events, most recently the Cinco de Mayo on, on last Friday, which I loved. And, you know, I really see, so far, what I've seen is a wide variety of opportunities for, for families to participate in different events. I don't, I'm not aware of all of them, so it would be a little hard for me to, to, to say, you know, whether it's enough or not, but, you know, I see the role of the commission in helping make those decisions, and helping to find out what it is that the community likes, and what they would like to see, and what they would enjoy participating in. So just kind of being that liaison between community and council and staff.
Okay, and so you mentioned not be, not having lived here very long, where, where did you recently come from?
I'm originally from Texas.
Okay, right, I see that.
And I've been here in California now for seven years.
Okay.
And in San Gabriel, this is my second year.
Second year, and, and so maybe a good question for me to ask you, is through your travels and your, your life experience, what events have you been a part of, or in places where you've lived, that you really liked a lot and would like to see here?
I've really enjoyed music festivals of all sorts, all different kinds of music, outdoor activities, I find to be a lot of fun, especially with, with families and kids, and being able, you know, kids being able to be comfortable running around and being loud, and just providing those opportunities, I think would be a great thing.
And I'm pretty sure outdoors in California is usually more comfortable than outdoors in Texas.
One hundred percent.
So you can get a little more of that?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Ken, Ms. Kano, right? Okay, to apply the community service. So I saw you working for the Coda Plaza Community Services, so it's, it's what kind of community service company?
Great, yes, so I work for Plaza Community Services, we are the oldest nonprofit in East Los Angeles, and we currently are serving children zero to five in a childcare setting. That is the main program that we're operating right now, those are two state-funded programs with California State Preschool and a General Childcare Fund. So we serve the neediest children in East LA, and we provide full-day childcare, so that parents can go to work, or they can go to school, and childcare is free.
Okay, thank you. And based on current, our, our, the city hosted the community service event, so did you think, what's the, you think you would be, suggest bring the new event to our city?
I'd love to see that, I would love to see a community event where residents can come and see all of the services that are available in the area, whether it's for older citizens, or youth, or children, whatever the case may be, there's so many services around, and to be able to bring all of them together into an arena where residents can just walk around and kind of go to tables that are most relevant to their own needs, I think would be an amazing opportunity for San Gabriel.
Thank you.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kano, thank you so much for taking the time to come and participate in, in civic engagement, it's a, it's an interesting process, and I sat in a similar seat before joining the council, when I was a commissioner as well. It's, it's definitely a time commitment, but it's rewarding in the end. And I see that you have a lot of passion, especially with your background and all the events that you've been participating in, and I kind of want to dive deeper into what Councilmember Ding mentioned, but more in particular with youth events. Which youth events you think can benef, can San Gabriel benefit, youth and teen? And from your experience, I kind of want to hear that, more of a dive, a deeper dive?
Okay, so from my experience, the things that have been the most beneficial are activities where children are safe, where they feel that they are being heard. I know right now that there, there is a lot of fear in community members about ICE. I've seen it in my, in the work that I do, I have parents that are keeping children home from school, they don't want to bring them to school, they don't want to bring them to children, to school activities for fear. And safety, I think, is really at the top of the list. As a parent, I would want to know that any activity that I send my child to, they're gonna be around adults who are, who they are safe to be around, and where the environment is safe, and that those individuals are going to do their best to make sure that, that it's a positive environment. That would be the, at the top of the list for me. But for kids, I think really, the active sports, and things like, not just the sports, but also leadership opportunities, perhaps a mentor or a pal program, where you, big brother, big sister kind of thing, where there's a, you know, a partnership made between a youth and maybe an adult. Or I think it really just comes down to talking to the youth in the community, and asking them what they like to do, and maybe, maybe they don't know what they like to do, maybe they haven't had the opportunities to experience different sports and things like that. So having them maybe come and try different things out and see what you like. I remember when my son was auditioning for the band, he didn't know what instrument he wanted to play, or what he would be good at, so he was able to try out several different instruments before he had to make a decision. And I think that process really helped him determine, you know, what, what he felt he was gonna be best at. And, and so that was, that was a good opportunity for him. But I think just engaging with the youth, and, and looking to see what are we already doing, and is it working? Are, are, are the youth engaging in what we already have? And if not, why not? And then how can we make it better?
Thank you, yeah, we, I don't know if you know, but in that commission, we, we still have the youth ambassadors, right, in that commission?
Yes.
You will be interacting, if you do get selected, you will be in, or that commission interacts with you, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Wu.
Thank you very much for your application. You just mentioned that you have moved to City of San Gabriel for two years. So in the past twenty-four months, that what is the very impressive point that make you feel this is a place that you want to commit your efforts and dedicate, make it as a home?
I really love San Gabriel. I think, I love driving by the Mission every day on my way home from work. I love being able to walk to Blossom Market from where I live. I love being able to walk my dogs in the cul-de-sac down the street, and I'm safe, and my dogs are okay, and there's no fear, even if I go out at ten o'clock at night, I'm, I'm careful, but I'm okay. And I think those are really the, the important things for me, is just enjoying being in the city that, where I live. I know a lot of people now, these days, are saying that they just want to stay home and enjoy their mortgage. Well, I just want to stay in my city and enjoy my city, I don't want to go into LA, I don't want to go to anywhere else, I don't, I want to stay here, I want to be able to easily access what I need to over, on the weekends, and I don't want to go anywhere else.
That's awesome, thank you so much, but I, what about some points that you feel the city that needs to be improved, especially when you will be, if you will be appointed as this position? What is the thing that you can see that should be improved the most?
Well, I, I, I work, in the work that I do, I try to make sure that opportunities are not only equal, but equitable. Everyone comes from a different walk of life, with a different set of resources and skills and strengths, and to be able to offer everyone the same opportunity at the same time, at the same place, isn't always the best way to conduct that. I would say, meeting individuals and smaller groups of people where they're at, and meeting the needs of, of where they're at, at that point.
Well, thank you very much, and I like your points that, don't stay at home and enjoy the mortgage, but just come out more, so we can, the city can enjoy the sales tax.
Right, if I can, you're right, exactly.
Does that conclude your comments, Councilmember Wu? Okay, okay, well, that concludes the interview for today. I wanted to thank you for your feedback, for sharing your passion, clearly you're very passionate. My husband's from Texas, so I know a little bit about Texas, too. This is why we've lived here all our lives. But anyway, I, I just wanted to let you know that we will be taking a vote at the end, and staff will get back to you on the results. But again, thank you, Ms. Kano, and I'm sure I'll see you at Blossom Market.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Councilmember Wu thinks he's funnier than I am. It's a good thing. Yeah, the only time it's appropriate tonight.
The next interview is with Mary Wang.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mary. Do you have a speech, or what's going on here? No, okay, no, I, I just wanted to, first of all, welcome you, and, you know, thank you for your willingness to serve our community, for stepping up and willing to, to apply for community services. So I'll just explain the, the structure here, so we have three minutes, each council member has three minutes to ask the questions, and then you respond, and if we hit the three minutes, we don't have to do three minutes for every person, but if, if we do get to three minutes, the buzzer will ring, and then we'll go to the next council member. And that's just to make sure everyone gets, you know, their fair time with you. And so my question is, of all the commissions to apply for, you picked this one in particular, Community Services Commission. And so I would like to hear from you, why this commission? What lures you into this commission in particular?
Well, I am a pickleball ambassador, as you know, and also I'm a tennis coach. I just went through a program with USTA Tennis, that's called Safe Coaching, so that way I could work with the kids. So the reason why I picked this is because it's recreation, and I want to be able to help San, City of San Gabriel with many fun programs, and also I would like to give back to the city, to work with senior, and also work with children, and that's my specialty.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Chan.
Mary, thank, thank you for, thanks for coming out. They laugh because they know what I'm gonna say, I've been, I've been irritating them all night. Because my, my standard question for all the other candidates was, how much you like pickleball? But then I see that in your, in your application, you really do. So I can't ask you that question. But seriously, I gotta get serious at some point. What is your vision for the future of Community Services Commission? Do you, I mean, do you like the current events that the city holds so far, as they are? Or do you have ideas for new or different kinds of events or services that you think would be, better serve our community, or draw other people to enjoy our community? What kind of, yeah?
Well, I'm kind of new with this, okay? So I'm just gonna come from a, just a resident perspective.
Sure, that's the best way.
I've, I've been living in San Gabriel City since nineteen ninety-nine, and I didn't get involved into a lot of, you know, sports, because I was just a, a single tennis player, and then not really a coach or anything. But I would love to bring more program, because like I say, I, I am a coach, and also I'm an ambassador, but I'm, I'm not really a, a coach that actually, you know, get paid, I'm doing this, I'll just volunteer. So I would love to see more program for the children, and also for seniors people, because pickleballs are very health, a very healthy sport. So for senior citizens, about that, people that has limited mobility, I would love to show them the sports could improve their health, and also mentality, because there's actually, there's a report showing that when people has depression, if they come out to play pickleball, it actually improve their, their condition. And also with seniors, the same, same situation, that when a senior citizen come out and play, it actually give them, I guess, the mobility, they become more active, and then they also not gonna have any more heart disease, okay? Just because the report that we have studied, you know, that, that's, that's been pulled out from the medical reports. So I would, I would love to bring more program, which is related to tennis or, or pickleball. And then I could probably host more tournaments, you know, and then also free clinics, that's what I think that, you know, from that, that part of my perspective. As, as, like I say, I'm, 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 I'm more into tennis and pickleball, because I am a coach.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Wang, thank you to apply to the community service. And that you like the pickleball, and you used to, you just said for the pickleball coach, you didn't cut any compensation, just warranty for the community service? And actually, our commissioner don't have this pay too, that's warranty job, serve our community. So, yeah, it's really appreciate you do, you, you have this kind of serve the, the mind. So based on you say, the talking about the, the program, so you bring, which hopefully we can, you can, based on you're talking about it, the pickleball or some program? Okay, beside the program, do you think any like community service, the, the, community event, which one you think you, you like add on the current way have the community service the event?
Events, probably I will host more tournaments. Besides that, I mean, if we're not talking about related to the sports, like I say, I'm new in this, this whole environment here. Event-wise, I would, like I say, I would probably bring other city, because there's different city, different team in tennis and pickleball. So I would probably host the events that I invite other city to have tournaments with San Gabriel, San Gabriel Club, let's put it this way, I'm trying to organize a San Gabriel pickleball club, so maybe we could actually generate, like, in the future, that we will be able to set up events to invite other city club members to come to join our tournaments, or any kind of events that we're hosting, which are Smith Park. So we have done that, actually, I have done that, just, you know, just to try it out. So what we did the last time is, that, that day you were there, we tried to invite live Temple City players to come join us, which they did, and then we had a mini, a mini tournament. So, so I think we'll be able to, to bring more people into San Gabriel, where we're hosting some kind of event, you know, which is either tournaments, or, or just a friendly competition, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hung, thank you so much for taking time and being here, it's a tremendous task just to be here, and sitting down in the seat that you're, you are, it takes a lot of courage for some of us, right? I also sat in that seat, or similar seat, before, and I, I know what that feels like. So thank you so much for taking time. I know you have a passion for what it sounds, pickleball and tennis and the sports, but I would like to know a little bit more of what other activities that, other than pickleball, I know that's your subject matter, would you, in a sense, champion and support, and particularly for the youth, other than the sports? Any ideas?
For the, for the, for the youth program, besides the sports, I would probably, would like to bring... like to bring maybe more art, you know, there's art events, and also maybe crafts, something, something that will get the, the children out to explore, to, to get, are we talking about having the events at Smith Park, or actually indoors? I mean, it doesn't matter.
Let's just say the San Gabriel is your playground, and we had all the resources.
Okay, then I would probably, I would probably host more events toward to the art and also crafts, so that way the kids can have hands-on. And then so that way, so I will, like I say, I keep saying sports, keep saying, you know, pickleball, because that was my main thing. But for the kids that's in San Gabriel, that I would probably would bring more art and also crafts, and maybe music, because I'm not in that field, so I won't, I would not be able to tell you, you know, that part. And, and my son is a school teacher, and he's a math teacher, so he's been bringing kids out to go to, you know, competitions, but I am not. So, but I would say, you know, if we could get kids are out more into arts, crafts, music, math, I don't know if that's gonna be possible or not, but I will ask him to get more information about my, you know, that's his territory.
Interesting, yeah, thank you for sharing. And one more, I'm just gonna dive deeper, and what, what drives you? What's your passion? You know, you have deep passion and commitment for like pickleball and helping, what is that driving passion that defines you and what you're doing?
To come here, to, I mean, in general? Well, I, like I say, this is something that I have never been involved before, and I think it's, because of my personality, I think would be good for me to get into this, this new territory, that I could actually share, utilize my knowledge and also my experience, and then to give back to the, the city. And then, because as, as a resident since 1999, you know, I have never get involved in this, this area. And that's why it brought me here, and then I think, I'll give it a try, you know? I'm not, I'm not, I don't think I'm the best candidate, but I thought it would be nice for me to give it a try. And I'm also bilingual, so, you know, being Chinese, I'd be able to speak different languages. I've been helping a lot of local, new residents that has immigrant to United States or to California. I've been doing a lot of translations and all that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Hi, yes, Ms. Wang, so good to see you here. Well, and thank you so much for not only applying for this position, but bringing the positive impact to our community. Then I was, I've been reading your resume, I did not understand what positive coach means, but I, before you come, I thought that pickleball and tennis, they hate each other. But, but now I realize that it can be the same, because you are also the certified instructor for the tennis and also for pickleball. So you're like combined together. I think this is a very interesting topic, because pickleball, that since you have lived here for 26 years, I believe that you know what the sport means to the community. And you have mentioned that you have, you're interested in having more tournament for pickleball. So can you tell me that how, how, what is this very successful example that you have seen from other city or other regions? That they combine the pickleball with their city culture, and they can make, rebrand the city, and can make that as like a, we call the sports-friendly or pickleball-friendly city? Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna use Moray Park as example. Moray Park was very involved into the group of pickleball players in the city. What they did the last time they had a tournament is the city was actually part of it, not, not like, not like now that we've been doing, just like, it's just private individuals doing the tournament. So Moray Park actually had a, a big tournament last year, and then the city got involved. So there was like 400 players that was actually enrolled to play, but, but the, but the park was too small, and the parking was limited. So I won't say it came out to become a disaster, but it was not very good. So a lot of complaints, you know, a lot of outsider came, and they just like, oh, I have to sit there for six hours to, to get to play. So, so, but, but Moray Park was really involved into pickleball. And, and Temple City Liveo, because they're new, that, I was, see, we were lucky that I got invited to Temple City to help them to start the pickleball, pickleball, they call it Pickleball Day, because they, they have no pickleball player. So they invited us from San Gabriel to Temple City, which is October 5, 2022, or 23. Then we started then, and then, and then after that, they just started their own program. So we, as a San Gabriel player, as a San Gabriel ambassador, and also Sonia and I, we were there to go to Temple City to help them. So those two city were very into, very involved. So when they had tournaments, the city got involved, too. So they just kind of show up, and then the city mayor show up, too. So, so I think, I think that this two city would be the closest two that I could, you know, make example of that. And then I would love to bring more people into San Gabriel instead of going to Liveo, Temple City, you know, because they're actually having eight permanent courts now, as we're speaking, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I think this is just a very good example that can, that using the sports and to elevate the new high to the city.
Yeah, and I want to ask something.
Please.
You mentioned about tennis, people hates pickleball.
Take it personally.
I am that person, you could ask a lot of players, I am that person to make harmony, because like I say, I, I play both sports, and I'm there every day to make sure there's no fights, and nobody calls police department. So that's, I've been doing that for a long time.
I want to see the fights.
Everybody knows me.
But thank you so much. I mean, this is much, I mean, it's just like the pizza and the pie apple. I mean, people think they cannot combine together, but the tennis and pickleball is a, you're bringing a great example to our city. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Clearly, you're a bridge builder. You build bridges among two groups that we thought couldn't come together. But this concludes the interviewing portion of, of tonight. Staff will contact you, we will be voting at the end, and I just wanna, just tell you how much we appreciate your time and, and sharing with us, clearly your, your passion for sports, but also just your passion working with people, and your volunteering. Clearly, you've been volunteering for a very long time, so I deeply appreciate that, too.
It's my pleasure.
Okay, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that, am I close enough?
Yeah. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Sheri, for, for being here. Thank you for your willingness to, to serve our community again. And let me just explain the structure. Each council member has three minutes with you, and that's, three minutes includes our questions and your responses. You don't have to fill up the whole three minutes, but if you, if you and the council member do, the buzzer will ring at three minutes. And so that gives everyone an equal opportunity to, to speak with you. I will begin with the question, and my question is, you have served before on the Community Services Commission, and you've decided to return. What lures you back into this commission? Why this commission, when you have, you know, all these others?
I was on the commission for, I think it was six years, and I really enjoyed it. I didn't leave because I didn't enjoy it, there were just other reasons I needed to step away. But it was very good people, I loved all the activities that the Community Services does, and I have to say, it has an amazing staff. They are second to none, and they made our, they made us look good on the commission. I enjoyed it, I enjoyed the people I was on the commission with, I enjoyed the staff, I enjoyed all the activities we did. So I think that pretty well explains why I like to come back.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Chan.
Okay, I'll spare you guys, because I already gave her the punchline when we were in.
She, he did.
Dang pickleball.
That's all he was gonna say, pickleball.
So the serious question, what is your vision for the future of Community Services Commission? I mean, do you like the current events we have so far as it is? Or do you have ideas for new or different events and services that you think would better serve our San Gabriel residents and/or bring, kind of invite more people to come into our city and, and kind of convince them to come and have a good time in our city?
Well, in all honesty, I think we have a lot of events. I mean, more than most cities, to be honest. We have more than the big cities around us, Alhambra, Pasadena, all of those. And for the size of our city, it's totally amazing how much we have. I can't really see adding any new ones.
Well, necessarily mean adding, but, you know, if you, do you think we should maybe switch them out, or you have ideas for new things we could bring in and replace, or, you know, switch out sometimes, or any kind of?
I kind of, I don't think, because it takes a while to establish, when you have a big event like Cinca de Mayo and this health fair that we had, and the Chinese New Year, first of all, it takes a lot of work to get it all organized and put together. And then it takes a lot of time for people outside of our community and in the community to be aware that we have this event. And so each year, they've grown and grown and grown. The one thing that I, I'm sure most of you know that I championed when I was on there is trying to get the pool repaired. That's a big one, that's gonna be tough. As far as events and activities, I think we pretty well cover it for our city, honestly. And we put a lot on staff. I mean, that's a lot of work.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
But if you say you want to get rid of dumplings and beer, I'm not voting for you.
Nothing to do with pickleball, right?
Okay, Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Cabot, to reply. Actually, you, your, your, your service is six year, and then you want to take a rest, and then right now want to come back to service, right? And, and I, for my personal experience, I, I have the Community Service, back to the 2018, you already served the, the Community Service Commission. I, I, I really enjoy the work with all the commissioners, including yourself, and I glad we have the, like, some, that time, some achievement. It's for the veteran, the, the memorial, the cemetery, okay? And so far, yeah, our city already have the, I'm glad that we passed this one. And, and also for the, for the farmer's market, okay? So, and I, I just try to remember something, it's include then the Smith Park's swim pool, how to wait to the renovation? So I feel it's good, two things, we have the, our city finally to, to do it, like veteran and, 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 and the farmer's market, but how can you help maybe to get like a Smith Park, the, the swim pool, the renovation? Yeah, so I, I also hope we can help the community because the facility too old, yeah. So did you have any idea?
Well, for the swimming pool, that's really a tough one. I mean, when I was on the commission, we, for three years, we would, would send in information to get grants, and we always got close, but we never got them. It's really tough, we're kind of in a, in a catch-22, because they would say we either had too much money for some, or we weren't poor enough, believe it or not. And so we, we didn't get them. Then the problem now is, if we would try to get funding from the state, from, they don't have it now. You know, we've missed that boat. Discretional funding was, was pretty abundant a few years ago, and we didn't get in, in on that. And that's, I know, what it would have really made a difference to get the pool. Now, I don't know, honestly, I, I don't know. That would be more up to city manager and the city council to determine how we can get that funding, because I, we tried when I was on the commission, and we just didn't have the luck. And writing grants is not an easy thing. We even hired a grant writer to do it, and it wasn't successful. As far as the farmer's market, again, that's another difficult one. We've tried different tax to get it, but there, every town, the ones around us have established farmer's markets for so many years, and they have a designated date, like a Thursday every year is, every week, I think, is in South Pasadena, Friday's Monrovia, Pasadena is Saturday. Those are locked into those towns, and you can't break into those dates. So for us to find a time to have it is difficult. Plus, it's just difficult to get people to come. As we know, we tried it, it was a cute little farmer's market, it just didn't generate the kind of revenue and people that we had hoped. So I, that's another tough one, I don't know. Another area that I would really like to see prosper is the, the Village. It's a beautiful location, but we've tried that before, too. Maybe we could revisit that location to try something, some events there, possibly, instead of having them all over here, have some of them in the valley, Village, or in the Village, rather. Same with the farmer's market, you know, that's a possibility as well.
Thank you, thank you. Still continue to have this passion for our, like, six years ago, the goal. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I do have to clarify, and I double-checked with Mark, farmer's market is not under community services, it's under economic development. So just for the department's sake, they were, they are working very hard to bring it back, but it's economic development, it's not community services. It's not just, I'm talking to everybody, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, just clarification.
If people kept bringing it to our commission, and we really weren't responsible for it.
Yeah, I know. It, it sounds like a natural progression, but they're working on it right now, economic development, so, yes. Okay, Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Thank you, Mayor. And former Commissioner Cabot, I just want to genuinely say thank you for your service. I know that you've been active in the community, and we see you all the time, and I saw you on the screen when my wife was serving alongside with you, and I know all the hard work that you've put into the city. So I, first of all, I want to say thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, so my question here is gonna be revolving around community service, the Community Service Commission and existing service. We, that commission is, is, and most of every single commission is for serving the, the people, not special interests or any personal agenda. How do you ensure that your actions and decisions as a commissioner reflect honesty, integrity, and a genuine commitment to, to the community's best interest, especially when there's disagreement? And we always have disagreements, right?
Of course. So that, is that the question? Okay. Well, first of all, if I'm on the commission, I'm only one vote and one voice. There's five votes, there's four other voices, voices besides mine. And even though I can voice my opinion, that doesn't mean the rest of the people on the commission are gonna agree to me, with me, and vote on it. And I, and I do think that I have a track record of honesty and working in the best interests of the city.
So you mentioned, you mentioned the Village, which I think is a really good idea to refocus our energy, and we mentioned it before, that there used to be some activities like the Anna, Anna, it was only one time? Yeah, yeah, we tried, we can't.
Tried, tried.
Yeah. Interesting. Any ideas with that? I would like to see a little bit more elaboration on that, and what ideas you think we can bring to that area, to the Village, and maybe possibly like to the south side of San Gabriel, any ideas that what we can do as far as with the commission?
Well, I think it's, I like your idea of bringing some things to the south part of San Gabriel. They seem to kind of be neglected, but they don't really have the facilities either. They have that one little park, which is cute, and I think in the past, they have tried to, in the summer, rotated some of the activities there, not when I was there, but I know they did. It, it is difficult, and if we're going to do anything to the south part of the city, you need to let people know in that part of town that these activities are going on. I think part of it was, when we did have something there, people didn't know it. You know, they're so used to coming up to Smith Park, and up to this part of town, and to the Mission, and we didn't get the turnout we had hoped to in the few things that we did there, but it was. that we did there, but it was mostly in the new park. But I like that idea. I think it's a good idea to expand some of those further out. But again, if you're going to do that, you've got to let people in the area know what you're doing and that it's available to them.
Outreach. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you very much, Cheryl, for coming back and replying for this position. And, you know, if the seat of San Gabriel, that we can see the great success on our community events, that your footprint is always there.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I truly admire that. But my question would be, for so many events in our city, which event that you think is most impressive to you? And if there is any event is not quite successful, you think it should be eliminated or to improve? Can you name if there's any?
That's a tough one. You're putting me on the spot. Because I like them all. I really do. And I think what would be helpful in that answer is if I talked to Matthew and staff and said, okay, what are our numbers? How many people did we get at this particular event? How many people did we get at this one as compared? Because that's going to be, if we're going to put all that much money into having staff set everything up and take it down, and people don't realize, it just doesn't magically appear. Our staff has to go in either early, dark, oh, dark 30, set everything up, then they have to tear it all down when it's done. And that's expensive. So I think that I would want to check and make sure what, I don't want to sound callous, but the financial value is to the city. If it's costing us more than we feel it's worth, then maybe we need to consider eliminating that and find something in its place. I'd be hard-pressed to say Cinco de Mayo, Chinese New Year, and Dumpling Fest, dumpling and beer, those are all seem to be extremely successful. I really, I don't know. And I don't drink beer. But, okay, I'm not saying it just because he wanted. He said I wasn't supposed to say, get rid of that. But they are. They're very successful. So I think that they do bring a lot of people in from outside of San Gabriel, bringing revenue into the businesses around. Outside of that, I'd want to check and ask about numbers and what kind of revenue is coming in. Because if they're, if it's costing us more than it's worth, we have so many successful ones, why keep it, like you say, why keep it if we don't do any good for it? Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you which one I'd eliminate, and I don't want to get in trouble with councilman over here that likes his beer fast. So that's not a very definitive answer, and I apologize. But I'm not sure I know what we would get rid of.
I see. Thank you very much for the comment. That concludes my question.
Okay, Sheri, well, that's the end of the interviewing process. I want to thank you for your time, for your past service, and for your commitment to our city. I know you're very passionate. You're at every event, and it's deeply appreciated. Staff will get back to you. We will be voting. And, you know, staff will let you know what the results are.
Perfect. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay. So does any council member have any questions for staff before we vote? Matthew's here. City manager's here. I think those would be the two staff members. And I see none. Okay. Marilyn, are you going to lead us in the count or in the ballot? Okay.
So what you have in front of you is a ballot where you will make a selection of four. After you make your selection of four, I will collect all of them. And then from there, if we have a consensus on the four, then we'll move forward to the selection of the one that will serve the four-year, or the one-year term from the four that's been selected. Okay.
So let's start with the vote for the top four. Okay, thank you.
It looks like we have a consensus on the four. We have five votes for Nancy Duong, five votes for Davis Barantes, three votes for Mary Wang, and four votes for Cheryl Cabot. The next vote that you'll be taking is, from the four, you will select one that will serve a one-year term. The remainder of the three will serve a two-year term. Yeah, but let me mark it first. So from the three, so it's going to be Jackie Lau. So this is who they'll vote for.
Let me check with the attorney. I know you have a tough job right now, but passing these ballots. But the city manager just brought to our attention that one of the candidates actually has three votes, which is the lowest number, that perhaps maybe that's what we should just to assign that, the one-year to that person. Because otherwise, you know, how do we decide, since we never asked anybody either? Is that something we can do? Okay. So do we make a motion to vote for Mary Wang, who has the least amount of votes for the one-year position? Is that, do you need a motion for that?
Well, yes. And is there going to be a resolution appointing the commissioners at the next meeting?
There will not be a resolution, but we do take a formal vote after we do all the informal polling. And tonight, we take that and we use it with a minute order, not a resolution.
Yeah. Selection of the one-year versus full-term candidates is entirely up to the council. So if there's consensus, we would have a motion.
Okay.
Probably start with appointing the one-year and then.
Well, but that's where we're at right now, is trying to appoint the one-year. So should we just do a motion to appoint Mary Wang, who has the lowest number of votes, to the one-year position as opposed to going through this whole ballot? Thank you.
See if that motion carries.
Okay, I need a motion.
Mayor, just a question to attorney and to city manager. Was that on the agenda, though, the process? Was that explicit on the agenda?
It was not. The council has every way in order to decide how that's done, but we didn't agendaize the process.
I think, Councilmember Wu, you're going to make the motion?
I want to make motion that Mary Wang to be a one-year appointed commissioner.
I need a second?
Okay, I second.
Okay, great. So let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
So now we have to take a vote to appoint the four. Just the motion to. Oh, to full terms. Okay. Would you like to make that motion again?
Yes, I want to make a motion that the three appointed commissioners with the full terms, that's it. What is that?
Yeah.
I second.
Okay.
Okay.
Tony, you had a question?
I just want to clarify, just this motion, just only for three one?
Yes.
So again, the motions, I motion that Nancy Dawn, Davis Barantes, and Cheryl Cabot to be appointed commissioners for full terms.
Okay. And the second was Herrera Avila?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Great. Okay, here it is. Okay. So the next regular city council meeting.
Second motion for the partial year?
We did that already. That was the first. Yeah, we went.
First one, it's for the rest of term. Second one for the full term, for the two years.
Sorry about that.
No, no worry. Okay. There's no council comment, so we can adjourn now. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 20, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Meeting adjourned.
At 7:40.